City Norco City Council Regular Meeting on Wednesday, May 2nd. Call to order, 6:00 PM. City Clerk, real call, please.
Councilmembers Newton, Hannah, Bash, Mayor Protem Grunmeyer, Mayor Hoffman, all present.
Yes. The City Council recessed to closed session to consider the following matters. Oh, were there any cards?
No cards, Mayor.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to reconvene from public session. Report. City Attorney?
Yes, the City Council discussed in closed session the items listed on the agenda, and there are no reportable actions.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And please remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Fred from the Norco Church of the Open Doors.
Can I have everyone to just bow their head in prayer and be in agreement with me? The Bible says that in everything, pray for everything. And so, Father, as we come together for this meeting, oh God, for Norco, the city of Norco, oh God, we lift up the city officials, we lift up the councilmen and women, county reporters, supervisors, fire chief. We ask, Father, for unity, oh God, for you says, "A house divided cannot stand." So I ask, Lord, for unity. We pray, Father, for wisdom. You said in Matthew's 5 and 6, "Blessed are they who thirst and hunger for righteousness." This meeting, oh God, this city is a beacon for righteousness, oh God. So I just pray, Father, that you say that we are not to lean on our own understanding, but acknowledge you in all our ways, and you would direct our path. Father, we are here acknowledging you for your wisdom, for your counsel, oh God. How the leaders can better govern this great city. I pray that this city would be a beacon, oh God, be a light for this nation, oh God. A standard, oh God, that God, we put in you first, oh God. And I pray finally, oh God, Matthew 6 and 9. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. And forgive our debts, as we forgive our debtors. And lead us not into temptation, but to deliver us from the evil one. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Fred. All right, I got to get some proclamations done, so I'll do the 1,000. All right, being as is, I am a veteran, I'm very privileged, and American Legion member, very privileged to welcome our ladies from the American Legion Auxiliary up here. Come on up here, ladies, on National Poppy Day. You can bring him too, he's fine. Come on up, come on. Come on up here. Come on up around here, so they can all see. You don't have to look at the backside. Because I'm going to read this thing, and you're good, you're good. All right. Whereas the red poppy is a nationally recognized symbol of sacrifice worn by the Americans since World War I to honor those who have served and died for our country in all wars. And whereas the use of the poppy symbolically comes from the poem in the Flanders Field, which movingly begins, "In Flanders Fields the poppies blow below the crosses row on row," referring to the poppies that sprang up in the churned earth of the battlefields across Belgium and France where soldiers died fighting. And whereas the American Legion family has been utilized, has long utilized the red poppy as its official flower, symbolizing the bloodshed by those who have served in our U.S. military. And whereas it is fitting, the American Legion, the American Legion Auxiliary expand the meaning and the symbolism of the poppy, mirroring the manner in which the poppy is symbolically showcased in England, Canada, and celebratory fashion on their Remembrance Day, and also known as Armistice Day and Poppy Day. And whereas the American Legion, with its support of Congress, has designated May 25, 2018, as National Poppy Day, encourage all the patriotic Americans to wear or display a red poppy on this day as a symbol of remembrance and help. Therefore, on behalf of the City Council and myself, do hereby recognize the designation of May 25 as National Poppy Day. And we encourage you all to join in on that day and wear the red poppy, and I'm sure these ladies will have some.
Yeah, we have them outside.
You got some?
Please help yourself.
Month of May, outside. So, you want to say something?
Well, you said it all.
No, you didn't say.
I just want to mention that we distribute poppies in front of all the state of Paris in Oregon, River Road, and Hidden Valley Way, and on Hamner, under a 19th and 20th. We'd be there all day with our poppies. And so, if you can, make it there and get one. That's all I have to say.
Okay, well, you got to introduce everybody here.
Okay. I'm a four-term president of the American Legion Auxiliary. This is our current president, Norma Chadwick, and this is our past chairman, poppy chairman, Nancy Schmidt.
Thank you, ladies, appreciate it. All right. And we're going to, let me see what you got here.
Just tell you more about the poppies.
Okay.
It's for you.
Well, absolutely, for the whole month.
Yeah.
And I hope that you take the opportunity, I know you do for the whole month, make sure, and Jeff, they're more than welcome up to Veterans Memorial on Memorial Day, right, with their red poppies, okay? All right, we're going to go up here, and don't want to rain. All right, my second proclamation, I guess, the National Preservation Month. Ladies, come on up, because I don't have, and gentlemen, I'm sorry. All right. Sorry, Matt. All right, come on back here, come on back out here, come on back. See, I made them all sit up there, so y'all be up here. So who we have here today is the Lake Norconian Club Foundation, along with our Historic Preservation. Ladies, just don't get excited, Doc, here. And this is National Preservation Month, so I'm going to read this, everybody. All right, come on, old Pat. Whereas, whereas the rich historical and cultural heritage of Norco is a treasure, is a treasured local resource that fosters civic pride and a sense of identity among the city residents. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. Whereas historic preservation is prevalent for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for all Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped our community. And this place matters is the theme of the National Preservation Month 2018, co-sponsored by the City of Norco and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Whereas the city of Norco has dedicated itself to being a leader in the area of historic preservation through its Historic Preservation Commission and active nonprofits like the Lake Norconian Club Foundation. So myself and the City Council, on behalf, do proclaim May 2018 as National Preservation Month. And Kevin, I'm going to pick on you, do you have anything to add, since you've been doing this stuff for a long time?
Thank you for volunteering. I mean, thank you. It's been a long journey for all of you, and thank you very much for all you do, it's fantastic.
All right. Pat, why don't you introduce everybody here, so.
Oh, boy.
You can let Jody. I don't care.
You've been at it far longer than I have.
Well, I'm going to need help, you know that. Well, Jody Webb, Diane, another Diane, a Sue, another Sue, a Mark, another Sue. If you're Sue, they want you on the tinity. A Matt, and a Mark. Thank you very much.
Thank you. They not only work on the Historic Preservation Commission, but also are very strong with the hotel and the preservation of the hotel and the artifacts and everything else that goes along with that. And I know the dedication and hard work, because I've had to work with these ladies, and let me tell you, they're tyrants. Get up that ladder, do that. So, but we really appreciate everything you guys do in keeping the historic preservation. And what is Norco, you know, because we all remember the past, so we don't screw up the future, okay? Thank you.
Ask them to raise their hands.
I know, okay, because I know that my, actually, my tax lady was born at the Norconian. Who was born at the Norconian? See? The hospital, thank you. All right.
I'll take the link part.
Okay. Well, there are, there's a whole bunch of her.
Because I'm secretary.
Let's stand around here, because we're going to get pictures. Cheryl.
I also want to say thank you to Greg Newton, because he also, we abused him also.
That's right. He was your president.
There are people, but they're in Hawaii, so we don't feel too, we don't feel too sorry for them.
All right. Come on up front, so Cheryl, get our pictures. Greg, come on up, and Kevin, you're part of this thing. Come on, you can do it. Up here, you're part of the hook. That's why I joined the.
Now that we have half the audience in here.
You guys, are you guys members? Come on, come on, come on, come on. You sure? No. If I got to hear it. Stand up there and put that up there, Matt. You're doing a good job.
Greg, get in.
Again, again.
Thank you.
Extra one?
I hope so.
All right, Matt, hey, this is your PSA. And I just wanted to remind everyone that the Heritage Room at the Community Center will be open during the hours of the farmer's market on the second Sunday of the month, in case you want to stop by and see the collection.
By the way, another thing, it's actually, May 13th is the 95th anniversary of Norco, just so you guys know that. May 23rd, May 13th, 1923, we became a township, so it's pretty cool.
All right, the following is Bonnie Slager. Come on up, Bonnie, from Norco Horsemen's Association.
Good evening, Bonnie. Our annual presenting, our 10 top trails that most need improvement, that's been going on since Berwin was young, and some of these are still on the same list, aren't they, Berwin? Some of these improvements needed were there at the beginning. This past year, none of the things on our list got completed, which was a disappointment to us. I know that the work has started on California, and people on 7th Street are already telling me they're really happy that that right-hand turn lane is gone. They're doing a happy dance over that, and so hopefully that will be done soon and look really nice. One of the things that we always consider on our list is connectivity of the trails, so that you can get from point A to point B. And I will again point out that the Alhambra Crossing is a wonderful crossing across Hamner, but it doesn't have any trail on either side of it. So the two places on Taft and by the Community Center are both on our list, because we need those, so that that wonderful crossing of Hamner goes someplace. Also, it's not on our list this year, but we still would like to see River Drive have a trail. That's kind of, we'll keep harping on that until something happens, so hopefully we'll see some things that we can take off our list this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Did you want to present that officially to us, or?
It's in there.
Okay, it's in there, all right. Thank you, we appreciate it, the Norco Horsemen's, and along with Bill back there and his crew that are always out fixing. And Bill, if you, he has his project, so if you want to go help out there, if a trail fence is broken in front of your street, let him know through the Norco Horsemen Association. And then at the same time, he likes to schedule work parties, so who knows, if it's in front of your house and you got to get the fence fixed, I'm sure he'll accept the volunteer term. All right. All right, moving right along, City Council business. City Council communication reports on regional boards and commissions. Berwin, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Most of the meeting's been consisting of budget discussions at both RTA and RCTC. Last week at RCTC, projects, we discussed about some ideas to move traffic along on the 91 freeway and the 15 freeway that's south of Corona. It's been a big problem, it's getting worse because of all the homes they're building down south, adding more traffic to the freeway, but they're going to make some changes on some of the lanes going through Corona to the county line, and see if that don't work. We'll know more about the changes in a couple of weeks. And RTA, about two meetings ago, at the main board meeting, we had an incident with a resident that kind of got, started getting unruly, and they got him out of there. And so last week, at our meeting, the sheriff came in and gave us a class on what to do with an active shooter, and all the exit points to that building over there, which is huge. Then today, at the subcommittee meeting over at the terminal, we just got the meeting started, and we had to evacuate the building, because the smoke come into one room over there, so we had about a 20-minute delay. But it turned out it was not an emergency, but they have a good evacuation plan, because all the staff that works over there, their first thing is to grab a backpack that they have handy that has emergency equipment in it. So we all went outside and stood out there for about 20 minutes, till they got the problem solved. But other than the budget, we hadn't had anything much going on, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Robin?
We had an unload meeting on Monday, and so we have one more meeting before our committees are done, because we align with the school year. So Kevin will be chairing that meeting for me, I'll be out of town. But we did decide at the last meeting, we're going to go ahead and proceed forward with trying to have a summit for students in the Norco area, and we'll work with the Youth Advisory Council on putting a summit together, looking at topics like mental health, suicide prevention, drug use prevention, and those types of things, and have a workshop-type format, and try and put something like that together. So I'm looking forward to that and having something come out of that meeting. Majority of our time was spent going over the California Healthy Kids Survey, that's a survey that's given to students in 6th, 9th, and 11th grade, asks them about their use of tobacco, drugs, and alcohol. It's completely anonymous survey, and it's given through the health class, and so the input from the students is pretty genuine and pretty honest, because they don't know where it comes from. And so the school district representative went over those results with us, and they have some grant money to be looking at targeting specific groups of student populations that have higher uses of tobacco and drug products, and so they kind of ran some ideas by the rest of us that were there on what the school district can do to help alleviate those issues. But mental health is a big issue with our young people today, and in our discussions, it's really an issue of having resilience and being able to cope. And so those are some of the things that the school district will be focusing on. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Kevin?
She talked about unload. We had a veterans committee meeting, I'll let Ted handle that. I'm really pleased with the Memorial Day, stuff is coming along. Three of us, Ted, myself, and Robin, all attended the Awards for Excellence for the Corona Unified School District. I had no idea how many 4.9 GPAs there were, holy cow. I mean, it's just absolutely amazing, and the scholarships these kids are getting are just amazing. Something kind of cool, the Vietnam Commemoration, we were the first ones in the state of California, and the second one in the nation to be part of the Vietnam Commemoration. I'll sort of pass it over to Ted, but they called today, and they're going to be sending Norco a proclamation as the first in California, so I'm very excited about that. And it's really hard, but we're arranging for everybody on the wall, and I can find pretty much all their relatives, they'll be getting a certificate and a special pin for losing somebody in Vietnam. These are really, the paperwork is enormous, but I'm hoping to have all that by Memorial The new person that we hired for the senior center is absolutely phenomenal. She, today, I mean, I've been going, what, for years, as the advisory person to the senior advisory committee, and I walked in, there were 35 people there, 40 people, and they were all mad, because they need room here, they need room there, and she was amazing. She actually figured out a way to get everybody into a place where they needed to be. So you got the ukuleles in the middle of the room, with the hula dancers on the other side, you've got the pottery people in one corner, you got the pool players in another. The one thing that I am concerned about is that with some of Costco and Sam's Clubs cutting back, there's a lot of hungry seniors out there. And I never really, I mean, I knew that, because I work with them, and Harvey for sure works with them, but there's one of the complaints, and I don't blame him, is that, one, how do they get help without being embarrassed? But there's no place to go at night, and as one guy said, I mean, he was totally sincere, he says, "Where am I going to get my food?" So, you know, Harvey, what you do is really important, and thank you, thank you. But I'd somehow like to figure that out. Also, we need to get the code of conduct a little bit more out there. That was one of the things that nobody quite understood. And then the other thing is that, I didn't realize this, and I totally get why we got rid of it, but the housing, the clothing room, so somehow we've got to figure out a way that some of these seniors, who, I guess getting clothes is difficult, and I think we need to find a way, I don't know if we can open that again, because I totally get why it was closed, but I think we need to figure something out on that, and I don't know what to do. And other than that, that's, I went through a ton of things, but those are the important ones. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Greg?
Thank you. Tomorrow evening is Chino Basin de Salter Board Meeting, so other than that, I have no report. Thank you.
All right, well, I'm going to jump on with Kevin Wessane, and this is from the Department of Defense, the Vietnam War Commemoration, and as President, or Chairman of the Veterans Executive Veterans Committee, this is certificate of appreciation to the City of Norco from the Department of Defense Vietnam War Commemoration. On behalf of the United States of America, Vietnam War Commemoration staff, thank you for conducting at least six events by December 2017 that thanked and honored veterans and their families who served in the U.S. Armed Forces during the Vietnam War. We are indebted to you and your volunteers for assisting a grateful nation in recognizing the service and sacrifice of nearly 2 million veterans and their families. Your long hours of planning and conducting events have been immeasurable impact in the lives of these veterans and their family members. Thank you for your support of this generation of veterans and of the National Vietnam War Commemoration, done on this 20th day of April 2018. So, Brian, I guess get that back to you on the committee, or give it back over? All right, we'll get it to you. All right. The other thing, and I'm going to turn my, a little bit of time here, Brian, so we can talk about this, but not yet. I went to the League of Cities Meeting of Mayors, and we're not the only city facing everything else. It's interesting when all the mayors get together and discuss, and from the east end to the west end, we all have the same issues that we're dealing with, and we all try to work together to try to resolve this. Everything from the homelessness, and the elections, and things that we're dealing. So it's good, because we network, and we figure it out, and we find out what's good and what's bad, who to talk to and who not to talk to. So with that, and they're also pushing their agenda for propositions and things like that, but as we get closer to election, we'll talk about that. The city manager and myself also attended Supervisor Chuck Washington's Symposium for Cities, again, east and west end, all exchanging ideas on what to do with, what issues are facing the cities. Everything from housing, traffic, to dealing with needs, and what to do with the citizen and the revenues. So it was good, it was good exchange. And let's see, and finally, as the, I want to thank the Horse Week, I don't know how many, how many Horse Week committee members do we have in here tonight? Stand on up, because you did a heck of a job, all right? I was proud to be this year's grand marshal, and I had a blast, okay? So thank you guys very much. Tony told me they made enough to have another one next year, so we're good. And but for the rest of residents, volunteer. It's great, I mean, this is your hometown, so I know a lot of you go up there, and you work up there one or two nights, and we really appreciate it. JT, and I heard you so many times on Friday night, then Sunday, you're back announcing the things. And Pat's over there, and Jeff pushing on the parade, getting us in lined up. There's a lot of things to do. So all of you that, and I probably miss somebody, but it's a great event, and it's ours, it's Norco, it's unique to Norco, so thank you guys very much. Brian, I know there's a lot more, but in time, I want you to talk about shortly, okay? May 12th, readers, I just version, okay?
Real quick, May 12th, we'll be hosting, along with the Army Corps of Engineers, a planting day. This is a restoration habitat project hosted by the Corps. This is just off of the downstream area of Cordenon staging area. We will be with the Corps' assistance, we'll be putting trees, shrubs, and ground cover in, and it's part of a restoration project for that area. And we look forward to those volunteers, 8 o'clock to 9 o'clock's orientation, and then 9 o'clock we'll be planting, and lunch will be provided. And we're looking forward to those who would like to do it, be there that day, and if you'd like to call in, let us know that if you have a group that would like to come out and volunteer, if you could call our office and let us know ahead of time, that way we can plan for it. And bring your shovel and gloves.
Thank you, Brian. All right, moving right along, City Council Consent Items. Are there any items you want to be pulled? Do you have a card, Cheryl?
No, Mayor, I'd like to pull on item 2B.
Any other? I have a motion to approve, and a second?
That motion carries unanimously.
And Cheryl, you pulled 2B.
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Council, on the minutes, on the first page, these are just minor typo errors, but on the first page, I just. are just minor typo errors, but on the first page, I just want to make a correction to the invicator. It was listed as Pastor Hillary, and it was actually done by our resident, Jeff Cahann. So, I'd like to make that correction. And then, before you, I have some additional corrections, starting on page 13. At the bottom of page 13 in red, there's just a minor change to company name. And then, moving on to page 14, there is a brief statement clarifying an action taken for the appeal hearing. So, if you need a few moments to read that, and if you're in agreement, or have any comments on that.
Anyone have any comments or questions on the City Clerk? It's motion to approve, corrections as noted.
Okay, please vote. That motion carries unanimously.
All right, this is the time for public comments. This one person's in the audience wishing to address the City Council regarding matters not on the agenda, may speak. Please complete the speaker card if they're in the back of the room, and hand them to the City Clerk, so that she may be recognized. And it's three minutes.
Brenda Newberry.
Good evening, Brenda.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Hoffman and City Council members. My name is Brenda Newberry. I'm a local financial educator, as well as longtime resident of the Inland Empire. Today, we're here to share with you our heart for our local and surrounding communities, as well as our country. As you may know, April was recognized as Financial Literacy Month by Senate Resolution 316 in the year 2004. The purpose of this was to raise public awareness about the importance of financial education. Even today, 14 years later, these principles are still relevant. Today, there are 76 million baby boomers, people born between 1946 and 1964. Every day, 10,000 of them, or us, turn 65. Many struggle to survive because they did not prepare for retirement. The cost of housing, living expenses, and healthcare are obstacles for everyone. Isn't that ironic that we live in one of the wealthiest countries in the world, but we always have money problems? We work hard all our lives, yet still retire poor. We do so much to raise our kids, only to see them finish college with a lot of debt. College tuition has risen 722% over the past 32 years, with many graduates having trouble finding jobs in their career field. Nobody teaches us how to manage our money in school. Financial issues are not often discussed. If we buy insurance policies, we stick them away in a drawer or filing cabinet. And if we contribute to our retirement accounts, we hope someone else will take care of them for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lucia Oden.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Dean Mayor, Council members, staff. My name is Lucia Oden, and I too, I'm a local financial advocate and educator here in the Inland Empire, also a longtime resident. I would like to share with you this book called Saving Your Future for your consideration. This book is printed in English, Spanish, Chinese, and Vietnamese, with over 1 million copies distributed. According to recent surveys, North Americans are facing serious challenges. 33% or more than 77 million Americans don't pay their bills on time. 39% carry credit card debt from month to month. Only 59% of adults say they have savings. The reason I am here today is to share with you our national campaign for financial literacy. Our goal is to have 1 million educated families by the year 2020. We provide free financial classes by experienced, certified instructors. Personally speaking, I have benefited from this campaign, and I'm passionate of this cause. Because there was no Saving Your Future book for me, there was no financial education for me. Most importantly, we are here to invite the city of Norco to join our campaign and help us in our cause by allowing us to bring these classes to your residents in libraries, community centers, and schools. In closing, I would like to read from Governor Jerry Brown's letter from April 2017 advocating for financial literacy. Let us all take time to increase the knowledge of our finances and encourage our friends and family to do the same. I encourage Californians to take advantage of the free resources in order to learn how to better manage money, investments, credit, debit, and avoid financial scams and fraud. By empowering Californians with the knowledge and tools they need to help them make critical decisions, we are investing in a brighter and more successful future. Thank you for allowing us the time to share. I hope you all have a great evening.
Thank you very much. One of the things, and just, I agree with you as a baby boomer, last year, and the Norco High School, what was the name of the program where they taught the kids how to budget? This is amazing, that what they did. It was really great. We got to, they got to do play roles as jobs that they got, they were assigned, and funding and everything else, and they got to go through. And we got to sell them stuff they didn't need. And it was really a very good class. Robin, you remember the name of the program?
It was during Step Up to Your Future as a Career in College Day that we had. So, if you leave your card, I will get in contact with you, so you can come to the high school and be a part of that day with us.
Okay, awesome.
Because it was really, I mean, these kids, they learned. They were shocked. They didn't have any money.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Pat Overstreet.
Good evening, again.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor again, and Council. I'd like to start off by thanking the city for helping us put on a fabulous parade, especially Derek LaCombe from the Public Works spraying that Avro chalk on the street very efficiently. 35 entries went off without a hitch. It was just wonderful to put on that kind of an event. And thank you for being such a great Grand Marshal. We really enjoyed it. And we are now ready, as soon as Horse Week finishes, we get right into the ranch tour. And we have six ranches this year. We were going to have a seventh, but we finally decided when we lost the seventh, that there's so much going on at every one of the ranches, that maybe six was just enough. We have properties from five acres to one half acre. What's great about this tour every year, we do draw in at least 30 cities from Southern California, just get to celebrate our rural lifestyle. And such a diverse way of using five acres to one half, especially up in the hills when you've got a split level piece of property. That's pretty amazing what people have done. And I've been literally praying for a ranch up on Vander Mullen, and we got one this year. So, I'm really happy, because that's a great, great example of what you do with a split level. Again, we have Refreshment Ranch for that $10. And think about it, it's the cheapest thing you can do in Norco because of the, the cost of Horse Week and the rodeo events. $10 per adult, 12 and under free. We have pony rides at Refreshment Ranch, a carriage ride. And then, 200 jumper equestrian demonstrations all day, plus a drill team, may even have two drill teams at one of the ranches. So, it's going to be a great day, and I hope you'll all take time to attend. Rural has taken over the event from the Norco Regional Conservancy. It was all pretty much rural members anyway that were manning the gate, so it seemed like an easy trans, you know, transformation. But, I just want to encourage you all to attend and celebrate our, our lifestyle in this great town. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Jeff Cahann.
Evening, Jeff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, residents. As a member of the Veterans Executive Memorial Committee, it's both a privilege and an honor to be on that committee as one of the very few non-veterans, to be able to help our city promote and recognize the sacrifices that our veterans have made. As you've already mentioned, we're preparing for our Memorial Day celebration tribute, so we've got a flyer out. I invite you and all of the residents to please come up on Monday, May 28th. The ceremony begins at 10:00 a.m. As a special thing, we're going to be unveiling our new POW MIA monument that morning. And our guest speaker is a member of the National POW MIA Families Organization. They're the organization that actually invented the black and white POW icon image there. And he's flying on his own expense from Idaho to be our guest speaker. Sadly, as we all know, in April of 1967, George Ingalls gave up his life. It was also in that same month that Mark Stevenson's father, Lieutenant Colonel Mark Stevenson's plane was shot down over Vietnam, and he was missing in action. And they did not recover his remains for 21 years. But, he was finally repatriated to America in 1988. So, our guest speaker knows personally what it's like to not know the whereabouts of his father for 21 years. So, he's coming to help us unveil that. Sadly, we're also going to be adding two names to our Lest We Forget Wall. Charles H. Schmidt and Rodney C. Simon, residents of Norco who lost their battle with Agent Orange. They died in Vietnam and didn't know it for 50 years. But, we honor them by adding their names to the wall. So, please come to the Veterans Memorial as we honor these men, as we honor the POW MIAs and their families, and the sacrifices that our veterans have made for this great country. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. I might want to add that following the ceremony, the Rotary Club, which is of Norco and Eastvale, is actually doing a lot of the funding for the POW MIA monument. And with that, they're having after Pitchfork Steak Fundue. So, come on up after, purchase a ticket, get a meal, have some entertainment and things like that. It'll be up at the park in the 4H Parks. All right.
Harvey Sullivan.
Good evening, Harvey.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm not going to be speaking about trying to get something on the agenda tonight, so I want to let you rest. But I'm coming back next week with all four barrels. So, anyway, Kevin, thanks for bringing up the, think about the food. I decided to get up and talk a little bit about it, because it is a well-kept secret in this town that we do have a food program here, run by the Norco Christian Church, and administered by myself and some other folks in the church. And we do the food program the first Saturday of every month. And right now, we're serving approximately 275 families. And we do it at 7:00 in the morning, the first Saturday of every month, rain, sleet, or snow, or holidays, doesn't matter, that's what we do. And we've been doing it out of right across the street, Front Bank America, 2727 Hamner Avenue, since March of 2005. And we'll be there tomorrow setting up around 10:00 o'clock. If you'd like to come by and take a look, be happy to have you come by and take a look. See what we do, and maybe we can talk about working something else. So, I've been very fortunate. I've asked a lot of clubs around town for money to help run the program, different things. We've been very fortunate. We have over $20,000 in our account, and we've been spending some of the money. We, we got a $25,000 grant last year. And we've been spending some of the money on homeless programs, to help feed some of the homeless people. And so, I'd like some ideas on how that, I could maybe use some of that money to help with some of the stuff that you were talking about. We'd be happy to do that. Right now, we have five distribution places in Norco. Saint Mail is one. They distribute it every Thursday at 10:00. We distribute down there at 2727 Hamner Avenue, the first Saturday of every month. Also, at Herdys Park, first Saturday of every month, Clark Terrace, same thing. And also, the Seniors and Pets, I believe it's the 4th Thursday. On the 4th Thursday? Yeah, I think it's the 4th Thursday of the month. So, they'll pick up their food the Saturday, and then they'll distribute it on the 4th Saturday. So, we have a lot of distributions going on, and we go between, usually get between 10,000 and 20,000 pounds of food a month. So, we go through five to 10 tons of food every month. So, and we've been doing it a long time. And if you know of anybody that needs food, you can send them, they're in one of those places, and they can get help. If it's not, even if they're not in Norco, we'll help them one time, and then we'll tell them how to get in touch with the place where, in their seat of where they can go get food. So, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Harvey, and bless you for what you do over there for the 275 families.
Mayor, that concludes comments.
All right. Conclude public comments, and bring it back to the House on Legislative Matters, 5 and 5A. John, is this yours?
I'll need this motion. No discussion.
No discussion? All right. And you know, this is the, I thought you read that, though.
No, don't have to read it.
Okay.
First reading.
All right.
Motion to adopt ordinance number 1033 for the second reading.
Second.
First and a second?
Please vote.
Okay.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, go down to 6A, Public Carries, Order of Abatement of Weeds on Vacant Lots. Chief Lane?
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, the ordinance or the resolution before you tonight is asking for the abatement of weeds and authorizes the fire department's weed abatement contractor to begin abating weeds on vacant properties. Suspectors did not comply with their notices to abate. This year, we have 11 properties that are not in compliance, and we're looking for your permission to begin the abatement of those parcels. With that, I'll take any questions.
Do you have any questions of Chief Lane? Erwin?
List is shorter.
Is the list shorter because we didn't get less rain, or are they being good boys and girls out there?
They're being good.
Okay, good. That's good. That's good to hear. Kevin, Greg, any questions?
Is one of, one of those the corner of Californian 6?
No. And I'll defer that to Andy or Steve. That property's in receivership, and it has a improvement on it, so it goes through the code enforcement process.
So, they can't knock the weeds down?
Not through the fire department. I cannot. It's not a vacant parcel.
Did you want to add? Okay. Appreciate that. All right, that mean, any public comments?
No comments on this item.
No comments. Bring it back. Anybody else have any further? You have a motion to approve? Have a second? Please vote. Oops, sorry, Cheryl.
Please vote. That motion carries unanimously.
All right, moving right along to 6B, Rate Adjustments Proposed by Waste Management of the Inland Empire. Gina?
I'm going to jump in there real quick, Mr. Mayor. We're actually going to do two items under this. One is, and the first one's going to be a presentation by Waste Management. For several years now, the city of Norco has been working with Waste Management, looking at alternative uses for the manure, maybe potentially for fuel. And that has been a longstanding question of whether it's viable or not for the city of Norco at this time. So, we've been working with the Subcommittee and Waste Management to develop a presentation that answers that question as far as where we stand at this point. And I have Doug Corcoran, who's the Director of Public Sector Services for Waste Management, and also Glenda Chavez here to do that presentation for you real quick. And then, once that's completed, we'll answer any questions you have regarding that. And then, we'll move into the actual agenda item, which is the trash rates for this, this next coming year. So, with that, I'll ask Doug to come on up.
Good evening, Doug.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, and members of City Council. Yes, I am Doug Corcoran. I do work for Waste Management. Oh, great. I was wondering how we're going to do that, because I was sitting back there going, "Am I supposed to bring my computer up?" All right. See if I've figured this out. Great. Okay. So, tonight, we're going to provide to you an update regarding your current level of compliance with state mandated trash diversion, because that's kind of critical to the issue of manure. Manure Management Matrix, which basically summarizes current emerging and developing technologies, or options for how manure could be handled, the future of diversion, say, we say, over the next 20 years, and then some conclusions and recommendations for you. So, let's start with the state mandate. And there is a mandate in place, has been in place for quite a while, that all municipalities are required to divert 50% of the solid waste that's produced within their jurisdiction. are required to divert 50% of the solid waste that's produced within their jurisdiction away from landfills. And failure to achieve this reduction can result in fines of $10,000 a day. So, basically, that's the exposure if you don't get there. And as recycling programs get more mature and as the law kind of is on the books longer, the likelihood of facing those fines becomes greater if you don't achieve those diversion percentages of at least 50%. In 2017, we collected 55,800 tons of material from the city of Norco. And out of that 55,899 tons, we diverted 33,428 tons. Now, it's green waste, recyclables, organics, which essentially means food waste. But the lion's share, 63% of your total, is manure that was diverted from the landfill. That leaves you with a total diversion rate of 59.8%. So, you're totally safe on the 10,000 tons a day exposure. But let me point out to you that if you did not have the manure diverted, your diversion rate would be somewhere around 22%. And then, you'd be, you know, you'd be looking at potential fines. So, essentially, your horses are saving you $10,000 a day in fines. And, yeah.
You got a rebate?
Yeah. Got to talk to them. Yeah. Okay. So, what can we do with manure? I mean, it's so important, especially here in Norco, that it's important to understand what are the options. And really, the state identifies only two acceptable methods that will qualify as diversion. And that's important because that drives the decisions on what you're going to do going forward. Manure diversion is only recognized by the state by spreading it on farms. They call that direct land application, composting, or anaerobic digestion. And currently, you use composting. This is a really interesting slide to me. If you look, there was a, this is manure generation rates from 2012 through last year. And if you look, there was a dip, started in 2014 and went further in 2015. It was still kind of low in 2016. So, we actually began to wonder what's going on. Is, were people, did people have fewer horses? Was there, did it look like there was a threat coming to kind of the lifestyle here in Norco? And we were concerned about that. I mean, I don't have a horse and I don't live in Norco, but just the idea that you have this community here is, I like it. So, when I see the, when I saw those trends, I went, "What is happening, right? Could it be the increased cost? Could it be?" So, we were a little bit worried about it. We saw a little bit of an uptick in the manure generation in 2016. But I'm happy to say that as of last year, it looks like it was just sort of a, maybe a, sort of an anomaly over the years and you're headed back up. So, I think your, I think your horse culture is alive and well and, you know, just thriving. And so, that's great because that means you're still safe as long as we divert the manure when it comes to those $10,000 a day fine. But it means that you also need to consider, what are we going to do going forward with it? All right. Manure management matrix. I'm going to walk through some of the processing technologies. This'll take a little while on this slide. But I'll go from left to right, top to bottom. Direct land application, that's an option. And when we say scale in the next column, that basically means like, how much of the manure out of Norco could direct land application theoretically handle if we went with direct land application? And basically, all of it, if you could find the fields, if you could put it out there. You get diversion credit for it today. I'm not sure where that's going to go in the long run because the problem with direct land application is control of application. And you run into some issues that it's not as, it's not as robust a process. And so, basically, you're just taking the manure from, you know, one place and you're just spreading it out in another place without any controls. You end up with potential problems with odor. There is material migration, whether it's dust or it's runoff or something like that which sometimes gets into the waterways, creates pollution and that. It's a low-cost option, but it's, it's only low-cost unless there are no problems down the line. And typically, you will run into problems if you don't have some kind of oversight. And the oversight is not really great there. There's disposal. Of course, the problem there is you get no diversion credits. You can handle all the manure, you got landfills. And you don't get any credit, so you don't want to go there. There's composting, and that's your current election. And basically, that's a very robust, mature type of process, mature industry. It has markets developed. You get full diversion credit. The costs are, we call it medium because it's higher than the direct land app, but it's not as high as some of the more expensive options that we'll get to in a second. Very flexible. And in my mind, it's kind of a noble way to process any organic material because you're creating a new organic material that has a value that goes directly back into, you know, growing crops or development projects and those sorts of things. There is anaerobic digestion. And you'll notice on the scale, we've put limited. I'll explain that on the next slide. But what you get from organic, from anaerobic digestion is methane and digestate. And the digestate then goes out into a composting process after the methane is pulled off. The issue there is the cost is very high. You do get diversion credit because the state recognizes that as a kind of composting. But it is a high cost and horse manure in particular, and as I said, I'll show on the next slide, is not a very good candidate for anaerobic digestion. And then, there's kind of the, the out-there, maybe someday, solutions of gasification, biofuel and pelletizing. These are all called conversion technologies. And they, there was, I guess, a few years ago, there's a lot of excitement about these diversion, or the conversion technologies. And there was a lot of rush because folks were out selling them, saying, you know, you'll make a million dollars off of it and it's the easiest thing in the world. And of course, you know, it just didn't work yet. Maybe someday it'll work. But there's a couple of roadblocks there. One is, it's unpredictable. And one thing we know in our business, the most important thing is, we move the material from the customers on the days that they expect it to get moved. And if you have facilities that you rely on that are up and down and up and down because they're kind of, you know, particular about the material, or maybe there's some technical issues and you got to stop and tell people, "I can't get your manure for the next week or so." That's not going to go over very well because you got to move it. And that's generally why we go to composting. And all three of those options have that same problem. They're unpredictable. They're also high in cost. And you don't get any diversion credit. The state does not recognize any of those as a legitimate diversion option. So, you kind of, you know, through the process of elimination, it either comes down to direct land app, which has its issues, anaerobic digestion, I'll go into that a little bit more, and composting. All right. This is a busy kind of a slide, but it really points to why horse manure in particular is difficult for anaerobic digestion, or why digestion is not really a great option for it. You can see at the, and it really comes down to gas production. What's critical to success of anaerobic digestion is the creation of, or the generation of methane that you can capture and use as a fuel, either as a vehicle fuel or you can use it to power generators, make electricity. And if you look at the slide at the, I mean, the graph at the top, you'll see the red line with the squares. That's the horse manure. That basically represents the production of gas that comes from horse manure in an anaerobic digestion process. All the others, the blue is cow, the green with the triangle, sheep, there's goat and pig and chicken. They're all better than horse manure. And the reason for that is, oh, and the data is in the table below that supports that graph above. The reason for that is that horse manure typically contains something called lignin, a lot of lignin. Lignin is a, it's a complex organic compound that binds to the cellulose in the manure and in the, in that material. And it's the cellulose that generates, when it gets eaten by bacteria, generates the methane, generates the gas. But the lignin binds to it. It's basically the material that gives plants kind of structure. So, it's like helping wood be hard or, you know, plant stalks be strong enough to grow. Otherwise, everything would be all floppy. And so, it binds to the cellulose and then it does not release during the anaerobic digestion like it does in other types of manure. Another element of horse manure typically is you have the bedding that goes with it. And the bedding is also high in lignin because it's either, you know, straw or it's wood chips or something like that. And so, that, when you put it all together, it's just not a good feedstock for anaerobic digestion. And what that means is, it doesn't mean it's impossible. It just means that an already expensive process gets more expensive because you've got to maybe treat it before it goes in there and then you've got to keep it in longer and, you know, those sorts of things. So, anyway, it's typically not favored by anaerobic digesters. And when they do use it, they tend to use it with a large supplement of food waste or other things like that that will break down more easily. And then, you can kind of like lose it in the whole process with all the other stuff. But it takes a lot. Okay. Let's look at the future. Now, currently, we're using Veramontis to compost the manure from Norco. And it's a solid facility. They do a good job. We don't see any trouble on the horizon for them, other than the typical trouble in our business of communities kind of growing towards our facilities or toward that facility. I can tell you this, in the next few years, 20, by 2020, you will not be able to use any organic material in landfills as alternative daily cover. And then, after that, organics in California are going to be banned from landfills altogether. So, what that means is, you're going to be seeing the development and sighting of many more composting facilities throughout the state and especially here. Because this whole area in the state, I don't have to tell you folks, is the fastest growing. It may be slowed down in the last few years, but it'll come back gangbusters if it's not already. Are you talking about some houses to the south already adding traffic? Well, all of that means organic production. Organics will not be able to go in the landfill. It'll have to go to processing. That means composting. So, we're going to see more composting facilities. So, we have Veramontis now. And at least for the foreseeable future, we have Veramontis, very solid. Beyond that, Veramontis is going to start seeing some competition down the road because there'll be these other sites that'll be popping up. We currently have contracts with numerous composters around Southern California and around California in general. So, even if there was a sudden problem with Veramontis, we're ready to redirect, move things around and ship to where it needs to go. I guess the key point I want to make there is, is you don't have to worry about manure. It's being processed in really the best and highest use manner. And it's safe in the present and into the future. There are, as I said, other things to do. We think land app, even though I had it on the, on the matrix, we think that's going away. That's just not, it's just too uncontrolled. And we know that, you know, the state's going to want to make sure they have control of that stuff. So, that really brings you down to composting and anaerobic digestion. There is a facility in Paris by, actually, they're, they're a competitor, but they're also, we also work with them. You know, they use our facilities, we use theirs. It's called CRNR. You probably know them. We're interested to see what happens with that facility. You know, it's an anaerobic digester, so it is bound by the science in anaerobic digestion. It's not like they've invented something that's brand new. All the stuff that I described to you earlier is relevant to that facility. And they are expensive. And I think it's four, five times what we're paying at Veramontis to do the same thing ultimately. It's possible to develop a new facility, a newer anaerobic digestion facility, but then you still have all the same issues that I went through before, which is intrinsically, horse manure is not great, which means you got to bring stuff in to help supplement it, to get the product out of it. And it's expensive. And we're looking at $10, $20 million for a small facility. And a small facility really isn't going to get the job done. So, conclusions. I think you're using the best option. That's really what I think it comes down to. You're using the best option for the current, present and into the future. It's the most viable. It's reliable. And it shows no sign of like going away as an option, Veramontis or composting in general. That's only going to become a more robust business in California as these new laws go into place and organics are no longer allowed into landfills. So, I guess with that, I think I've hit the end. Yeah. I'm here to answer questions, any questions I can. If I can't, I'll write them down and then I'll find you the answers and bring them back to you.
First of all, Chad, do you have anything to add to that?
No, again, we want to bring this forward and mainly because there's been a lot of perception out in the community that there's, they thought that there's going to be this other technology, we're going to produce this thing or fuel or whatever it might be, and we're going to save money. And we really want to bring this forward to have people understand is that that potential technology is just not viable now, especially for our type of manure. And I feel strongly, and the data supports that. And it doesn't mean we're not going to continue to look for the future. There's always brilliant people out there coming up with new ideas that they might use for our product. One of them is still pelletizing. Pelletizing is still an option, but the state doesn't recognize it. Even if, because I've had companies inquire about maybe using our manure to pelletize. However, the state doesn't recognize it. So, even to go that route, we need to get the state, our legislators, to actually change the code to acknowledge that that's a viable mechanism. But there's pushback on that because they believe you're just basically creating a fuel, which is the pellets themselves, and it's creating another type of unwanted effect, which is the smoke and everything that you, when you burn in your pellet furnaces. So, they're not keen on that idea. But, so, mainly, we want to point out is that we are doing what we can. We think this composting certainly is the best method, right as it is. I wanted to make sure Waste Management conveyed that going in the future, they can maintain that process. So, we stay in state compliance, which is my number one concern because I don't want to get into the issues of noncompliance. And it's going to get harder with the state because now they're doing organics and that, which impacts our commercial businesses and mandatory compliance there. And that's going to be a whole nother topic that's going to be hitting us over the next year of how we're going to implement that, make sure we're in compliance and making sure commercial places are compliant. So, the state's not making it easy on us on many different levels, but I do believe what we're doing now is the best technology, the best method. It seems that we have options going well into the future. And it's the best way to keep it as cheap as possible. But there is no grand goose out there where we can all of a sudden be making money off of our manure. So, that seems to be the prevalent thing. I get questions on, "I thought we were doing this, I thought we were doing that." It's not there. And it doesn't look like it's going to be there anytime soon. But we do and will commit to looking at those technologies because I get stuff passed to me about studies this, colleges doing that, doing a little bench stuff. So, again, great thinkers out there, but we also have one company, CRNR, who's doing it, and they're struggling. And that's our example right there. And that's the market we're going to compete against if we ever build something. So, keep in mind, they're already cornering the market if there's going to be one. And they've spent tens and hundreds of millions of dollars on that facility. So, we're already behind the eight ball if we were going to make our own of trying to find a market. So, but like I said, we'll continue to watch it and see what's there, but our priority is simply to keep the cheapest one possible and make sure we are compliant with the state at all times. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg, anything for Chad or Doug?
Doug, I just wanted to thank you and, you know, I appreciate you stepping up into our quarterly meetings and discussing this. One of my- One of my concerns though, long, long range is with, as you talk about composting facilities and, and the availability of land. As, as development occurs, that land for composting is going to go further and further out, which then we have the transportation costs. And as we would see, if, if Veramontes was to go away tomorrow, yes, you may have another facility. But our, our manure disposal rates would then certainly hike for the additional transportation. And then as we get further in the future, we're going to be going further out to these composting facilities. So that's one of my concerns that there's a technology out there. It's just hasn't been found yet. Though I think I would be a little more, I'd give the CNR boys a little more credit that, you know, I think they're on to something. But I do agree that the, the manure by itself standalone is not going to feed that beast.
So I think you have a very legitimate concern looking into the future. And that's just kind of part and parcel of our business in, in all ways, is that as land is developed and you've got to move further out. And so I think, you know, we do the best we can to mitigate that for as long as we can. But ultimately, things go that way. And it honestly though, take, I mean, there's a, you could go a long, long way to a composting facility and with all the cost of that transportation before you get to how much these digesters cost to use, even if one was in your backyard. I mean, you're looking at $100 a ton or something now. That's today. Who knows what happens down the road? So, you know, you're at about 22 bucks a ton going into Veramontes. That gives you $78 to play with before you even get to the AD, you know, the anaerobic digestion costs. So it is true, that'll happen over the long run, but it's a long run before you hit that number. And, oh, and on your technology comment, believe me, if they're, if somebody comes up with a better mousetrap, we're all over it. We don't, we really don't care. Like we're agnostic about the technology or anything. Whatever works is reliable and cost effective for our customers, we're going to go there. If somebody came up with something way better than landfills, we'd shut them all down tomorrow. We'd just say, let's do that. But these are the things we choose because they work for the customers.
Kevin? Robin? Bruin? All right. Yeah. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
And now we'll go on to Gina, your part?
Yes. I'd like to present the rate adjustments for, for Waste Management for fiscal year 1819. The existing 10-year franchise agreement provides that Waste Management is entitled to receive rate adjustments for inflation based on the Consumer Price Index and pass-through disposal cost increases. The agreement also includes an increase in franchise fees throughout the period, the first five years of the franchise fee agreement. The franchise fee increase was approved to spread over five years for residential and three years for commercial. And beginning July 1st, 2018, the franchise fee rate for both residential and service and commercial service will be 17.9% for the remainder of the contract. The pass-through items for the Waste Management proposal is a total of, the CPI is 2.79%. That's the proposed rate. And in addition, the, as mentioned, the residential rate will go from 16.32% to 17.9% on July 1st. Additionally, the pass-through rates are for solid waste disposal regarding the cost, the Riverside County tipping fee, which is increasing 3.61%. The solid waste disposal component of the rate will increase from $37.94 to $39.31 per ton. The green waste disposal cost fees will increase by 6.34%. The green waste disposal component of the rates will increase from $35.45 to $37.70 per ton. And the manure disposal component of the rates will increase from $21.25 to $22 per ton. This translates into overall manure cart rate increase of $1.61 and manure bin rate increase of $5.66. Additionally, scout fees were a part of the contract. And these will be increasing from, on July 1st, from $25.66 to $34.95 for scout fees, for scout service per month. I'd like to bring Glenda Chavez up to discuss organics recycling and that to your attention, bringing it to our residents' attention again.
Good evening, Glenda.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and members of the community. While we continue to do our outreach efforts here in the city of Norco, we have our recycling coordinator who is in contact with our customers, who are commercial customers who might fall into the threshold that is set by the California, California recycle. The threshold this year has also been changed from the last time I spoke to you. Now it's for cubic yards of organic waste produced every week. So as you can imagine, there are some customers who are large producers, but a lot of them already have existing organics recycling programs in place, such as you could see your local Stater Brothers. We have added an organics customer. Last year, we added Miguel's, who is really an example of a corporate company that is committed to making sure that they are compliant with this regulation. Well, a lot of the customers that, like Chad said, with some other questions are obviously cost. And we, like Doug mentioned, we definitely try to provide them the best alternative at the best prices. So we continue to do that educational outreach to them with partnership, you know, with communication with the city through mailers, bill inserts, you know, social media advertisements so that we could be there for them to, you know, answer any questions. A lot of them do want us to go out and do waste assessments to make sure that they are compliant. So we do provide that as a free service to our customers here in Norco. If you have any questions.
Do Council have any questions with Glenda? Greg? Kevin?
I was, I was almost gone.
All right. Didn't get away yet, huh? Bruin? Anything? Robin? So you're just up here for organics? All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Glenda.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Gina, back to you. Do you have any more?
No. That concludes the staff's presentation.
And I'm going to, this would probably be, Greg, did you want to talk to Gina about rates or maybe Glenda or Doug can chime in?
Question for Gina. In your, in your summary about Waste Management requesting disposal increases, waste disposal, green waste manure, and consideration for recycling administration cost increases. I think I'm missing the, or maybe I'm looking at it differently, where are the recycling administration cost increases?
Not seeing where that's located.
That was something that submitted initially. He denied it because we believe it's part of the contract and therefore it's not in the right increase.
Spent all that time looking for something that you guys were on top of your game and...
Just got to call in.
I don't like doing that. Want questions now?
Yeah, I just, because I got to open up public cards.
That's all I have for questions.
Okay. And Glenda or Gina, you can answer, answer this because I do have one. Our manure carts, we'll go to manure, 96 gallon cart, correct? The Toder or wherever, who makes them, O-Holz or one of those companies, 96 gallons, correct?
That's the standard size, yes.
Standard size. And we'll just stick with the manure since you already have rates for extra carts. Each 96 to have, essentially that's a quarter or not even, it's half a cubic yard, correct? Doug shaking his head, yes. So it's, it's just under, it's just under a half a yard.
I'll take that as a yes as well.
It's just under a half. Well, I could tell you it's .47530, but it is. It's okay. It's, it's, it's under half a cubic yard. And here's my point, and, and I'm just, because the question is, we have scout fees that went up. And I noticed on the contract when we did initially, the scout fees, this will max out our scout fees on the current contract, right? At the $34 or they're going to go up each time, right?
I believe it goes up to 45?
45 at the last thing. So they're going to go up this year and they're going to go up next year.
Correct.
And, and I only say this, I'm just trying to look at this as, when we look at these, you look at the cost of having that two yard or two cubic yarder out there for your horse manure, where you could actually get it cheaper, correct? If you had four individual carts, four individual 96 gallon ones. Is that true?
Well, because they would pay the manure rate of the individual cart because it's not considered part of the three cart service.
Okay.
Which is your green waste, your recycling and your trash. So you would get, you would pay for one manure cart and then the additional, manure carts would have an additional fee.
Which is, it would be the same rate as the, as your initial one, correct?
It actually isn't the same rate. It's, it's a reduction. So you get the full price of one and then additional ones are less.
Oh, so, and here's my, it's, here's the question. If I had four 96 gallon carts, I mean, the manure carts and the wheels, I could have, I could, same as having a one, two cubic yarder. So I'm not going to pay for the scout, not going to pay for the, and the higher cost on the, on the two yarder, correct? So if you're going to give me a reduced rate, because if I had the same rate, it's going to cost me $130 a month for those four 96 gallon ones, correct? Just rough, if, at the current rate, at $32.50, 52 cents a month for the one-time, one-week pickup.
26. The, I'm looking at the rate sheet if you can give me...
It's, it's 32.52.
32.52, correct.
Okay. In other words, if I had four of those, my monthly fee would be 130. Equate that, the same as having a two yarder with a one-week pickup. And that's with the scout fee at 34.95, that's 150.91. I'm getting the same amount of manure taken out of my property. And I, that's what I'm saying. What I'm asking you is...
If you're basing it on quantity, your rationale is pretty...
Correct.
Correct. The convenience though of having a bin is the fact that you don't just get, you get service additional days versus just on Mondays.
Yeah, but if you don't need it, that's what I'm trying to get at.
If you don't need it, then that would be in a more economic, that would make economic sense.
Is there an incentive for Waste Management for a person, and I know I'm looking at just on the numbers for residents, is there an incentive for the resident to have the multiple carts out there versus the one two cubic yarder on a, on a standard one week, one day a week pickup?
If that makes, it's what the customer would prefer. So there is really no...
Okay, I'm just trying to save the customer some money. And if you could give them a reduced rate, is it feasible to look at this thing as a reduced rate for additional carts in the future? I'm not asking you to do it now because we're going to this thing. But to look at having, if you had two or three additional 96 gallon carts out there, the 96 gallon ones, so that he didn't have to have the two yarder.
The two yarder. It's something that we could discuss, definitely.
Okay. That's just, I'm looking at it. All right.
And one of the things too is that because of the trails, I mean, there are areas where we can't place a lot of carts for safety purposes. So it would also, we'd have to keep that in mind as well as the uniqueness of the property and where they want to be placed.
I understand. I'm trying to give the residents options. So that is feasible. Okay. Thank you. Any cards on this? Yeah, go ahead, Greg.
Glenda or Gina, on the manure carts, you're saying if I have a second cart, it's a, it will be, it's less than the 30.91 I'm paying today?
No, I misspoke on that. It is the 32.52 for each one.
Okay, so there is no discount then?
Yes. But there is a discount if you're opting for, what Greg is saying, Ted is saying is that it would probably make more economic substitute the bin for carts if that's something that the customer would like to do.
Want to roll four or five down there on a Monday night, or Monday morning?
Two and a half acres.
Yeah.
I just want to...
I'm given options, okay?
Just want to mention, as you know, I'm kind of new to this, but I understand that if, it's different, there's a difference between wet manure and dry manure and the cart versus other ways to, to have your manure picked up. So if you have a cart and it's filled and it's wet, it's very difficult for Waste Management to pick up.
Obviously.
There you go. So it's, that's something to think about regarding your choice of cart.
Looking at options. Cheryl, any cards? Thank you, Glenda. Appreciate that.
Yes, Mayor. Jody Webber.
Good evening, Jody.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just a couple of comments. I'm completely confused about all of this. In looking at the minutes and your agenda tonight, I, there is no differentiation. I understand the, the pass-through, but there isn't a clear explanation actually of where the pass-through is. Tonight's entire presentation has been about manure and I don't have horses and there's, I won't get into the reasons why I don't, but I'm looking at some of the description of green waste and I have even pulled out my bills and still can't even differentiate between where the adjustments might be. And I don't even know that that's proper notice for this entire hearing. The other thing is Waste Management and their considerable value and the, the services that they provide to many cities in the entire state or Southern California area, they've never actually described what their lobbying efforts have been for all the troubles that he just described to you. So I would actually encourage Waste Management to come back to us and describe to us with the governor that we actually have. I suspect that there's a lot of options that are available to them and yet they haven't actually provided to us any solutions that they can have for all the problems that they actually presented to you. So I'd like to know what their lobbying efforts are. And I would like a better description on what the breakdown will be for the pass-through between solid waste, green waste, manure disposal, because I don't have manure disposal. They don't describe what the solid waste disposal would be. They only describe what organic counts or recycling would be, which includes apparently food waste, green waste and landscaping, which still, I don't understand where the pass-through weights are or where they're going to show up on my bill. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
That concludes the comments for this item.
Bring it back to the dais. Closing public hearing on it. Greg?
Once again, Gina or Glenda, I'll mispronounce this, Agromen?
Correct. Agromen?
Who are they?
So Agromen is the green waste processor that we utilize for Norco. And to answer the question, the, their rates increased for us. So we are basically just, the term pass-through is that the rates are increased to us. So we have to calculate it into the, the rates for the July 1st, 2018 rates and towards next year. So, and we did provide this, in our packet, we did provide the letter, which indicates that the rates actually increased as of January. So we have been covering those increases. And since our submittal is to, you know, later, we are providing you with the documentation to give us the pass-through rate adjustment.
We don't take any green waste to Veramontes at all?
We used to, but last year Veramontes is no longer collecting green waste. We used to, but last year, Veramontes is no longer collecting green waste.
Okay. Do we not take any to Burtac, Agwamaza, any?
No, our partnership is with Agromen, yeah.
So...
Which is in Chino, so it's close.
Let me preface this, you do a wonderful job for us, okay? You, and you take great care of our residents.
Thank you.
So don't ever take me wrong on that, and I sincerely mean that. But I have heartburn with all these pass-through letters that, basically, they're generic to me. It's, yep, my, my, my rates are going up because of fuel and steel and workman's comp and employee raises and benefits and blah, blah, blah. But who, who fights for our residents? And I, I take that as, that is our fiduciary relationship as council. So it seems to me that you get a letter from Veramontes that goes, my rates are going up, and it passes right, right through, and I, I don't see the fight, in a way. And, and so what concerns me is that your CPI, your CPI is 2.79%, and I understand that, that's part of the agreement we have. But then, and I'll start with the county, the county wants to go to 3.61%, did you go back to the county and, and fight that?
They said that the, that the rate for us, yeah.
So, so to your, your green waste guy that wants to go up to 6.34%, did you question their pass-through rates?
We negotiate the rates with them, and when we initially start, and obviously, the increase, Agromen is a new facility that's also doing organic, so it's just documentation that they provide for us that indicates that they have to increase their rates to do business.
Yeah, and see, I just, I just can't accept that, that letter, the way they, they formed it. And then, then it's the same for Veramontes, they're going up 3.5%, and it's just basically that, oh, I got to hire an extra guy because I find trash in the manure. That, that means nothing to me at all. So my contention is that, I'd like to see waste management go back to your pass-through people, start with the county and your green waste in Veramontes, and go, here's the deal, it's 2.79% increase, and if they don't want to do it, then I think waste management ought to pick up that difference. Thank you.
Kevin?
I don't know if I agree with Greg or not, but I'm thinking about it, it's a pretty, pretty interesting thought. My problem always is scout service. I think we made a bad deal, as you know, I didn't vote on the first contract. I think that manure, getting rid of manure is key to getting it off the property. I know I'm speaking to deaf ears, but we probably, I will bet you, we lost 10% of the horses, because people can't afford to keep the scout service, maybe more. And what are people going to do with the large lots? What has kept everything in place is horses, and more and more and more, I think, hopefully, people are realizing we're a patch of green and a sea of concrete. And the scout service is just so expensive, and we shouldn't have put it in, like, for one vote, but we absolutely should not have done it the way we did it. I keep hearing how it wasn't legal and all, bull, did it that way for what, 20 years? So anyway, other than that, you know, it would be nice, it would be nice to hear if you guys did try to fight the cost of, of doing business at these places, but I also know this is a unique service, so it's really, really difficult.
Well, I could, I could attest that, for example, I have a great relationship with Veramontes, and they have been experiencing a large number of contamination in the manure, a lot of trash, and I was able to get them to actually just increase that small percentage, because they are, I mean, I know that it's, it's, you know, hiring more people and all that, but those costs occur, and, you know, obviously, they, they are also losing money, and so I was able to negotiate that small increase. So please do know that we do advocate for our customers, obviously, we don't, it's a money that we don't really, we don't make money on it, we're just, you know, passing it through, and that's why the terminology comes to play.
But otherwise, I concur with, with Greg, you do a great job, and the staff does a great job, and this is a problem that I, and I also have to concur, I do think that there's got to be some, I know, I know what you're saying, but I've been dealing with a guy at UCR that everybody kind of laughed at, but the truth is, they're coming up with a couple of brand-new things that are very interesting. Now, they might be 50 years out, but our goal is to have this here in 50 years. Lawyers, what did Shakespeare say? Anyway, that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Robin?
Glenda, I just have a quick question about the trash in the horse manure.
Mm-hmm.
If there was some way that we could show a decrease in the trash in the manure, would they back off on their rates? Did an education campaign in Norco, hey, Norconians, when you guys are throwing the hay string in there, or whatever, or that extra Coke can, you're increasing our fees, why don't we get together and make sure this doesn't happen? Will they come back and say, oh, you guys are doing a good job again?
It's something that I could go, I could, I could bring up to their attention and see if they're willing to, so it's something that I would obviously could propose. I mean, contamination is a big issue, not just in manure and recyclables, too, so if we could show a change in behavior, I think that that would be something that they would consider, but I'm obviously not Veramontes, so I can't.
Right, well, I'm just wondering if that's something that Norco and Waste Management can team up and come up with something to let the residents know, if you're being lazy when you're picking up your manure, it's costing all of us money.
Definitely.
And I think that might be something that could be helpful with, with this particular piece of it.
Yeah.
Robin, I think that's a great idea, because I got, I have, what, six removed a week, and I catch people all the time throwing stuff in there, and they say, well, I didn't know, it's just a, and that, you might be onto something there.
Yeah, we've actually done a lot of videos on recycling, how to recycle, right, and how to recycle often, and definitely, manure is a, a good, you know, educational piece that we could use, and educating people on how to properly do it, and work together to, to see a decrease in contamination.
I do believe that the drivers do try to identify contamination when they pick up the bins, so if they see there's a commingling of material, they'll tag that material or the door, clinic, do they tag the door, saying that...
They tag the actual cart, yeah.
The cart, saying that this has been a, a mixed, and advising that you're not supposed to do that, or you can be fined later on, because they do have ability to fine folks if they continue that process. So, so they do have an active process trying to do it at the source, so there is an effort by Waste Management to try to identify that for different services.
Oh, right, and I get that, but I'm going to guess part of this comes from like a miscellaneous soda can, or a couple hay strings being thrown in, and the driver's not going to see that when they pick up those bins. And so I just think if we make more of an effort with our residents, that we can cut that contamination down pretty significantly, so. I've had my bin tagged before I'm aware of the process.
Ooh, ooh, oh. Yeah, yeah. All right. Berwin?
She could be our star video, in our video.
Yeah, thank you, Glenda, I think you do a great job also, but I'll agree with Councilman Newton, I think your staff, next year, before you bring this up, needs to go to your sources out there and explain to them about their costs, it's getting tough on everybody, and I'm looking at this chart that the gentleman had a while ago, of the different years and how many tons of manure went out of here on the thing. I figure that the low years was when hay skyrocketed, and the people had got rid of horses, and when horses died and they didn't replace them because of the cost of hay, then the last two years, I, I think right now hay's kind of stabilized, it's very, very expensive, but I see quite an increase in the number of tons of manure for last year on it. But I think, I think you guys are doing a good job, and, and with the technology that's out there, it's, a plant would probably cost $10 million plus. Well, by the time they come up with something that we can use, it'll probably be up to $20 million. So I don't see that the price of that's going to change on it, so hopefully, we can keep, take it out here at Veramontes, I don't know how many years that's going to be, be there, but hopefully, we can, and, and thanks again.
All right. Go ahead, Greg.
Glenda, I wanted to follow up, I just remembered, at our last meeting with the mayor and myself, we were talking about green waste, not sure if it was an urban legend that we would be allowed to put a certain portion of manure in our green waste can?
Yeah, you indicated that you had heard that it was, someone told you that 25%.
Right.
So I confirmed, and we, Agromen doesn't take manure in the green can, in the green carts, so I think it was an urban myth.
Okay.
Sorry.
Actually, it was a former employee of yours.
Yeah.
More of a myth.
Your memory's better than mine.
Yeah, but, yeah. I'm going to, go ahead, Andy, go ahead.
Jody's question and the comments that were, have been made by Councilmember Newton. I think your comment essentially is, how do we verify this pass-through cost? The franchise agreement we have with Waste Management gives us the option to audit their cost, so if that's the city council's desire at some point, we could request to, to see what actually is Waste Management paying for this pass-through cost, although I don't know whether the contract that Waste Management has with this thought parties gives them the access to also audit the books of those companies to determine what their true costs are. So that's a mechanism by which this can be verified. Other than that, I think the material that's been presented is adequate. With respect to Jody's comment in terms of how is, how do I see these pass-through costs, the components of them on my bill, and the answer to that is, what you're seeing here is obviously a consolidated bill cost. For example, if you have the residential carb side service, which includes the three carts, so your bill is $26.10, that's what you're going to see on your bill, that covers those three carts. And that $26.10 includes, obviously, the Waste Management cost, includes all this pass-through cost. So the way Waste Management submits these things to us is, they provide us this long spreadsheet that shows how all the pass-through costs are built into the rate, and it's up to the city staff, we go through it and verify all their calculations to make sure that the rate that they are showing here is, is actually, have been calculated correctly, factoring in those pass-through costs, disposal costs, and, and, and the cost from the provider of the green waste, as well as the manure disposal. So we do verify that, and that spreadsheet is certainly available at City, City Hall for anyone to look at in terms of how that calculates back into the rates.
Thank you. I'm going to answer part of, because I, a Berwin's question for you on the 217, the year 2017, and Doug's theory that we had more, an increase, part of that, and this is tonnage weight, and if you remember 2017, the winter of that, we were wet. So you're going to see, because we were wet for the first couple of months, so you're going to get, see your tonnage rate go up, that might have been a play to it, too, hopefully, it's also because more people are getting horses. We will know, this is 2018, we've had a mild winter, who knows, maybe it'll go down because it's dry, just like Gina said, it's wet and dry. So we'll have to look at that, that's the way I look at it, when I, when I see volumes of weight, to see where it is. But I'm concerned, when I see the recycling barrels increased by 10 to 15, 15 to 20% according to Veramontes on this, this is an education thing because of the trash, and if you've got videos, or we need to make videos, can you get with our new editor-in-chief of Norco's deal, and Matt, and if they make me do a video, let's get a video to teach people to keep their trash out of there, because I know it's, I know what he's dealing with over there, it's, Robin already threw it, the can, the bottle, the feed bag, those go in there, but after cleaning up, after some of the big horse shows up at Ingles after all the shavings, I find syringes, I find, well, you know, not only that, pace warmers, everything else goes into that manure trash, and that's all in there, and for us to screen it up there, we would have to just do hand screening, and I know what he's dealing with. But you said something to me earlier also, that it was the shavings that they, Veramontes doesn't want either.
The large volume of shavings that they're finding, too.
So that leads me to, back now, the green waste guy, Agromen, does he like shavings?
I don't know.
I'm just, I'm, well, because if shavings are causing Veramontes, because this may be something we need to, to work on, on education, somehow or another, if people are using straw or shavings for a lot of bedding, it goes in there, it just, it defeats the whole purpose of the process, so I don't know how to filter that out or screen it on the ranch level.
When I, when I visited them, myself and our district manager, Miguel Velazquez, attended with me, and we did see, it's, you know, it's like if it was a landfill sometimes, some of the loads that come in, they have tons of trash, and so, because obviously, we want to know why this increase is being given to us, and so we met with them, and, and we, we did see the larger volumes of contamination, and the longer the processes, so it's, it's a real thing. So if we can do something to educate the public and see a decrease, I mean, I think it would benefit, whether or not that would result in a decrease in rate, that's something that I would have to go back to Veramontes and discuss.
I mean, that's something, again, looking out for our residents, too, is, is go fight for us a little bit on this trash and contamination, if we can, as a city, if we can limit the exposure that, on the trash. Now, you say trash, we're talking just garbage, not just...
Garbage, yes.
So is not worried about the shavings so much?
No, it's mostly garbage, yeah.
Okay, so that's easier to deal with, and then, okay. All right.
So the shavings, the shavings are an issue?
There's, I mean, I'm assuming that there's quantities, you know, the balance between actual manure and the shavings, he did mention that, that, that shavings tend to, you know, slow down their process, but his main concern was the trash that he is finding.
And then, did I hear you say they don't take green waste anymore?
No, they don't.
Do they take it from individual property owners, or just as a Waste Management?
I do believe that there are maybe some landscapers that go and, and have some public loads.
I take stuff there all the time.
Yeah, but not in the quantity that a city would produce.
Does he have an alternative for the shavings?
I would have to ask him.
You could find that, all right, I can talk to him, I'm over there all the time, so. By the way, I bought your explanation, just so you know.
Thank you.
And Glenda, if, when we come back, again, looking out for the residents, your, your expense on these, the 96 gallons, and I'm, I'm talking to a person that has a two-yarder for just maybe two or three horses, and he can get by, he or she can get by with a 96-gallon one, we ought to give them that option. You're only going to, your truck going there is going to cost the same amount to pick up and drive up the street, picking up one can as it does two cans, I mean, let's face it, you're going to get the weight in there. But I'm just trying to think, if you could reduce the costs on the multiple cans for some of your owners, one, you might reduce the cost, the number of scout trucks you need and the pickups you have, and reduce the number of, I want you to kind of go back and throw this at you, do the research on this, so let's see we can help our residents out. We want them to have the horses and the manure, but if it means having two 96-gallon car instead of one two-yarder, they're never going to fill up, let's, let's give them an option on it.
Mr. Mayor, let's make a comment to that, you got to remember, customers have the ability to choose the service they want. Like you pointed out, you just did the math, you figured out, I do four carts versus a two, a two-cubic yard bin, I save money, but like Mr. Newton pointed out, you also get, for your own sake, you get more labor... to do it. It's four carts you've got to push.
I understand.
So again, I just want to emphasize, customers have choices. And they can do what's best for them financially, which meets their needs and the labor that takes to do what they need to do.
I'm just asking them to look at reducing the cost of that second can, if they can.
And a final comment, a different comment. I just want to make sure that, while I understand Councilman Newton's desire for Waste Management to advocate for Norco, which I believe they do, and all their customers, you have to remember, we're not the only customer going to these places. So while education is very important and the right thing to do, just to have people do what's best for us, make sure we're complying and making it possible, there are plenty of other users of these facilities that cause the contamination, that we're still going to get hit with the same excuse. And that really what it is, it's their excuse, whether it's contamination, higher costs, health insurance, whatever it might be, there will always be something. Nobody does not raise their rates for services. So is that, we don't have a lot to leg to stand on. I've done this for many years with landfill operations, and I understand this process. So, and for us, they don't need us. So we don't have a lot of footing to say, well, you're going to do your rate lower, or I'm not coming to you. We need Vermontes, we need Aggrumet, we need the landfill. And there's the other choices are not good for us. So I want to make sure I'm pairing the expectation of what Glenda can achieve. She's always going to advocate for us, I know she has. But we are limited, because I've been that same footage, I've gone to these vendors and talked about different things and go, why is it going up? But I can't get their books. I can't say that you're cheating me.
No, I don't think anybody up here thought that. But what we're trying to do is if we educate our residents not to throw, I don't care what the City of Chino does, the City of Eastville does, or those when it comes time, but if we can educate our residents and we can show, and Waste Management would hopefully back us up, say, you know what, Norco residents, pay attention to the rules, and they don't contaminate the trash. And I would hope that Waste Management would fight for us when they go to Vermontes and these places and say, these clients don't do that. I don't, you know, the other cities they have may do. But let's educate our residents to see if we can knock that 15 to 20% increase, because he had to hire more people to sort through somebody else's trash. So with that...
I have a question. So what does Vermontes do with all those stuff that we give them? See, I'm kind of, I understand what Chad is saying. But I also like the idea that because he's a businessperson, we want to help him also. But he sells 21,000 tons of what we give him. And to say that he doesn't need that? Really? Do they not need Norco? I mean, Vermontes is in business. He generates, he makes a product from all the stuff that we pay him to take.
I think it's a mutually beneficial partnership, obviously.
I agree. So let's leave it at that. But I want to make sure people understand that he needs us, he does need us. And the truth of the matter is, we have to advocate for a certain kind of lifestyle. And I suspect there probably aren't other communities that are delivering that much manure to his facility. So I just want to make sure people understand, he's making a lot of money on the other end from what we're giving him. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 201817, approving the costs. Got a motion in a second?
Please vote.
Yeah.
That motion carries 4-1 with Councilmember Newton voting no.
Thank you. Okay, pass. We're going to take a 10-minute break at nine o'clock. All right, let's keep going here. Go on there on six...
Steve.
Steve, thank you. Attentative parcel map, and this is from Steve.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. This is a parcel map to divide, proposing to subdivide 3.25 acres into two parcels. The property is located on the west side of Hamner Avenue, between, right in the middle, between Fifth Street and Sixth Street. The property currently is shown by the assessor's parcel map as being two parcels, but the title company confirmed that it actually is just one parcel. And the applicants are hoping to get the two parcels that they thought they had. The property has been graded, but has not been finished to complete that grading permit process. Street dedications exist, but street improvements have not been completed, and they are a condition of approval on this map. The Planning Commission reviewed the map proposal at its meeting on March 14. And at that meeting, it was discussed that the proposed parcels do meet the lot size and dimension requirements of the CG zone where the property is located. And with that, the city's role is, as was explained by the city attorney, is mostly a ministerial process, in that our, what we do is verify that the proposed lots do meet the minimum requirements of the zone, which these do as they're being proposed. The Planning Commission recommended approval. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation. Unfortunately, the applicant or representative is not in the audience tonight, so I will conclude my presentation.
All right. Council question of staff, Berwin? I'm sorry, Rob.
Yeah, Steve, I think I read in here somewhere that they might, they want to divide that up so they can put, maybe put hotels there?
Yeah, the intent was to, at least, they had interest from one potential hotel developer that didn't want the entire property. However, we have not received any conceptual plans or any application to do that yet.
Well, by dividing it up, looked to me like if they put a hotel on, then they're going to have less parking, if they got two spots there instead of one large lot. And I think when we approved the Hampton Inn a few years ago, that we said these hotels needed a place, parking lot big enough to park, pick up some trailers in there. And that's, that's an acre, acre and a half, and they'd probably cover over two-thirds of it with a building and everything. It's going to make it pretty tight in there to put rigs in there with all, with other traffic.
And keep in mind, we've kind of had this same discussion at the Planning Commission, that really, all is before, there's no project proposed, there's no potential project, all that's before you is dividing the lots, which meet the standards of the zone. If it turned out that there was a hotel that needed more space, then they'd do a lot line adjustment or come back in and merge the lots. But there's no project to consider.
There's nothing on there, nothing?
No, nothing at all. This is just purely a division of the property. And as Steve indicated, what they bought on the assessor's map showed two parcels, and it turned out that it wasn't. And so, they're just basically putting it back the way that they thought it was when they bought it.
And this is the property that's already been dug out over there?
Yes.
And the street improvements will happen on their dime? I mean, they...
Yes.
Instead of us taking money for it, they will?
Yes.
Get them done directly when they fix it.
It's conditioned that it has to be done before the city accepts the final map for recognition, the street improvements.
Okay, thank you.
Robert?
So that's what my question was, because that's condition number 12. So how long could that be? Are we talking weeks, months, a year?
Well, the tentative map is good for two years.
Okay.
And if at the end of two years, they haven't done what they needed to in terms of the conditions, they can request three one-year extensions up to a total of five years. So it doesn't have to happen immediately.
There's also no obligation, that request is the operative word. There's no statutory obligation that you grant any extensions. Usually, it's, the extensions are granted because it's a larger project and they explain to you why things haven't gone as quickly as they thought they were going to, like typical developers do. But in this case, finalling this map, they really need to finalize it before they can market the property to anybody. So I would think it'd be relatively soon.
Okay.
Kevin?
Okay.
Greg?
Steve, since this is a, was previously a mining operation, would it be possible to add, or still may be, would it be possible to add a condition onto this that would say no onsite grading or activity until there's an approved building project? Is that, is that possible on a parcel map?
Yeah. Yeah, it's in the code for all projects.
Yeah, I know. But there's either people going onto that site now and just stealing the DG, or they're still selling DG. And then, somewhat non-related, and I'm kind of disappointed that the representative isn't here, is that there still remain violations of the Water Quality Act on this property. And to me, it's, any action we then give up, leverage. And we're waiting for the, to hear back from the state on this. And I did want to question the engineer record on this. When we talk about street dedications and then street improvements, that would not, that would just be curb and sidewalk curb and gutter, correct? A drive approach would come with the project, whether it was a shared drive approach or two-drive approaches.
Yeah, what we typically do on, for any project in the city, is to discourage traffic on the street. We encourage shared access and shared parking, along with shared driveway, as feasible. The problem is, you can only implement that as lots develop next door to each other. But during site plan review and the establishment of the conditions, that is, we're always looking to condition projects that they have to do shared parking and shared access.
Okay. Because that kind of goes to what Berwin was saying, if there was a, I mean, on their conceptual drawings, they show like two restaurants, but if it was, but the examples that you used here were of hotel and hotel lot sizes and acreages. So that would be something you'd want to look at with the project.
Definitely.
Okay. And then, there was just a note here, and I probably highlighted this just for the benefit of our city attorney. Per the city attorney, the subdivision map act does not give the city authority to deny a proposed map if the proposed lots meet the minimum lot size. And I would comment that that statement is misleading, because the subdivision map act does allow a city or an authority to deny certain tentative maps if they can make certain findings.
Sure. I mean, just none of those apply in this circumstance. And I didn't write the staff report.
And for your reference, that's 66473.
Yeah. None of those apply in these circumstances.
I would agree, but it seems to be a misleading statement in the staff report.
I didn't write the staff report.
Should have reviewed it, John.
Let's keep going on this. Let's go.
No, we're fine. I just wanted to, you know, clear that up, I guess maybe for Planning Commission-wise, but there can be grounds for denial.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
So Greg?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Steve, I got two questions on conditions three and condition 14. That would answer both the questions dealing with the code, the grading and everything else, is that correct, that Councilman Newton pointed out?
Yes.
So that actually covers that aspect of it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. All right. And you said the speaker isn't here. Do you have any cards on this?
No cards on this item.
No cards? And granted, I want to ask, so we don't have this here, is there anyone else that wants to speak on the public regarding this? Okay, we're going to bring it back, bring it back here. And Greg?
Mayor, since I have concerns on the state violations of the Water Quality Act on this, I would like to continue this item and have the representatives, engineer present to answer the questions and give a status of the violations and the mitigated remedies they propose before we move forward on a tentative map.
Second.
I think that's a good idea. I'll second it.
We have a first and a second?
Please vote.
All right. Moving on to, just on that, that just has to come back to us, doesn't have to go back to planning, correct?
No.
Greg, it just comes back here. Okay, I just want to make sure we all understand that. All right, this is on six?
D.
I don't have a D. Mine doesn't say D, it says six. Oh, I already did that. Oh, that's, all right. No, I'm looking at, no, I didn't, it just, I took it out of the book so I can follow it. Thank you, John, that's why you're here, you sit up here as a city attorney, okay? Six D.
Seven D.
All right. All right, this is, I'm honored to continue this.
Motion to continue the public hearing?
Second.
We have a first and a second?
Please vote.
There are no cards in there, right, Cheryl?
No cards.
Okay, let's make sure.
That motion carries unanimously.
That's why I brought him up.
You saw?
I know, that's what, it doesn't have it.
C.
That's tentative map.
ABC.
I know, but I see, it's looking for D. Yeah, I know, that's what I'm, all right, I'm sorry. Let's go to item 7A, verbal discussion regarding Riverside Transmission Liability Reproject. Andy?
I do have some bullet points put together for discussion.
Okay.
Let me see. Quickly, just want to go over the purpose of the project first. The purpose of this project is for Southern California Edison to build and operate 230-kilovolt transmission line in substation to ensure electricity reliability for the City of Riverside. Also, one of the reasons why this project is being proposed is to expand electricity capacity to accommodate future growth, as well as ensure that there is additional delivery point of electricity into the City of Riverside. Therefore, the City of Riverside does not have to rely entirely on the existing Riverside Public Utility Vista Substation. Just a quick project overview, here's a drawing that shows how the project goes. The reason I put this map here is to show some areas of the project that has been undergrounded, which is a revision from the previously proposed... which is a revision from the previously proposed project. And most of those underground, the undergrounded area is in the City of Harupa Valley. In terms of background regarding this project, Edison first filed their application with CPUC in 2015 to construct and operate the project. In 2016, the design of the project was amended to relocate approximately two miles of the transmission line from being overhead to underground. The change also included a relocation of the transmission lines from the east side of Windview Avenue to the west side. The proposed change in the City of Harupa Valley was made mainly to address the impact that the transmission line will have on residential and commercial projects, which were approved by the City of Harupa Valley. Some of them were approved before, and some of them were approved after the City of Riverside certified their own portion of the environmental impact report in 2013. So there is a portion of this project that is entirely in the City of Riverside, which the Riverside, City of Riverside is the lead agency with respect to that portion, and that environmental impact report was certified in 2013. So due to the changes that were made after the City of Riverside certified the environmental impact report in 2013, this, the purpose of this subsequent environmental impact report is to address how those changes that have been made, what impacts they have. And Panorama Environmental, which is the environmental contractor for CPUC, has been conducting public hearings on this subsequent environmental impact report. And some members of the city council, as well as staff, have attended some of these public hearings. The project as proposed negatively impacted the City of Norco. As a result of this impact, the city council on February 15, 2017, voted to oppose the project. Some of the impacts, the negative impacts that were referenced in that letter of opposition include impact on property value, visual effects, impact on air quality, and these impacts have not been addressed as far as the revised project is concerned. Just a quick look here in terms of where that project, what it looks, how it would affect visually the City of Norco. This is where the project will go through the City of Norco. This is a current view, picture of what it looks like, but once the project is built, this is what it would look like. Basically, that's a quick summary of the issue. Annoted and Kevin all have attended some of these public meetings, and staff is looking for direction, keeping in mind that the opposition letter that was sent last year is still in effect.
Thank you, Andy. I asked the city manager to put this on our agenda. I attended the April 19, California Public Utilities Commission overview of the draft and subsequent EIR on the Riverside Transmission Reliability Project, along with Steve King, Chad, and Andy, we were all there. Unfortunately, we were the only city there, except for City Riverside. So I wanted to make sure that when we did this letter back in February 22, 2017, it not only talked about the Riverside Transmission Reliability Line, but it also talked about the Circle City line also, so the Circle City project. And since that time, Councilman Hannah and myself have actually met with Southern California Edison on the Circle City line, and its impact on us is actually not as great, I feel, as this one, because they're actually reducing the number of lines going through on rural road versus this one. So that's why I wanted to bring it up, to see where we would stand as a council again on this. So I'm gonna bring it to Greg, your comments on it.
Questions? Yeah, it's kind of a question on the public utilities. And, and I'm not sure, but the way it was explained to me was that if, the City of Riverside, if these lines go overhead, okay, that the cost to the City of Riverside or Riverside Utilities is proportionate, that's a shared cost. If the lines are to be underground, that, that cost would be borne by City Riverside Utilities, okay? And that, part of the game playing, in a sense, is if, if residents go to the PUC and the PUC dictates that the lines have to be underground, then Riverside just has to pay a smaller proportional fee?
That I've never heard, because I've never, but maybe it's because I've never seen a circumstance where the PUC ordered underground.
Right. I was just curious, because I know there's, there's got to be some bigger game that we don't get and don't understand on it, so I was just kind of curious to that.
Yeah, but otherwise, the requirements, if the requirements are, we don't pay for undergrounding, so if you want them undergrounded, you, city, whoever you are, pay.
Unless the PUC said undergrounded, and then it becomes the smaller proportionate cost.
It could well be, in which case...
I'm still in agreement with the letter that we wrote last year.
Kevin?
So I went last week, and it's kind of a sham, forgive my language on this, but in my opinion, Riverside doesn't even have the right to do this, they just want to run this project through other cities, and I personally think they need to abandon the project. There's some of the things that I don't understand, they did their environmental impact study in Riverside, but somehow they extended it into the county. All of a sudden, we have a county park is trying to give land over for an easement. My understanding is John Tavelloni is trying to fight that, so I think one of the things we need to do is find out, what is John Tavelloni doing to stop that transfer of land? When did that EIR happen? I really object to the land, as I said, going across Norco land. In my opinion, all Riverside's trying to do is figure out a way to make money. I get they want a reliability, but the reality is, they want to sell the electricity, and I don't think they should be allowed to do it on the dime of Harupa Valley, Norco, and even their own residents. La Sierra, which is the weakest district of all of those, they totally object to this. I've now been to about five meetings, and they stand up and they're like, we don't want this, what are you doing? So I would like to make our letter stronger, and I would like to go to John Tavelloni and see if he's going to try to stop that transfer of parkland. My understanding is, and this is second-hand information, they have to get permission from the state parks, and they didn't get that permission. One of the other things, and maybe I heard, Chief, maybe you could tell me about this, in Montecito, it was overhead power lines that caused fires during something, somebody was saying, and so to run these power lines over the top of this foliage and stuff may be an issue? True?
Yes.
So I think, I think that needs to be included in our letter, stating, I don't even think this is safe. So I would like to double down on the letter, if possible, and I would like to talk, to have somebody talk to John and find out what he's actually doing about this, to kind of get the real skinny on that. I would encourage them, just flat out, say, look, abandon the project, it's not right. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Berwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur with what the other two councilpeople have said, we wrote that letter, I'm gonna stick with my guns on it, but I do not understand how they can get an EIR on this and the area that it's in. I know that they were talking about a road through there several years ago that was going to be almost impossible to get an EIR on because of the river. And if they go overhead, like Kevin said, you've got the danger of fires when the winds really kick up, and we know how easy the river bottom catches on fire, and where it goes when it, when it does. But these things would be right behind our houses over here on the northeast corner of town, and I'm looking at that map, and are they talking about starting the underground before they get to the river or after they cross the river?
Steve, the underground is on the, if you look where, just where our park is, whoops, if you, see, I don't know, Berwin, can you see number eight there? Okay, number eight?
Yeah, I didn't pass an eye test at the driver's license thing, so...
All right, let's put it this way, seven and eight are on the bottom.
Okay.
Okay, where item seven is, is that, that is underground, the red line, you can see the red and black line?
Okay, I see that.
That's all underground, all the way from number six, that's along Pat's Ranch Road to seven, and then just at the corner, and that would be the golf course, and I think that's our, our city property, right, Andy? No, we're on there, just, just north of our city boundary there is where it pops out.
But see, I don't know how they can go in there and dig and disturb the environment with all the plants and the wildlife in there, I don't, I don't believe they've got a current EIR on there, so...
Well, that's what they're doing now, they're doing the EIR.
That's what...
Yes, and I, the, I think in there, so they're, they're going back up, but you're, you're correct, it's...
But I think you guys, Mayor, Andy, if somebody needs to talk to Tavelloni and find out about that park, and I'm, I'm gonna stick with my guns on that letter, I think write a stronger letter, like Kevin said, and let them know they've already cut us off of water over there for writing that first letter, so what are they gonna do to us next?
Okay. Robin?
I just had a question on the report, and I'm not sure who can answer this, because it's my first time reading one of these, but on page ES 20, on ES 6.2, the first sentence of that paragraph says, "The environmentally superior alternative is the no-project alternative." I'm wondering, is that just boilerplate, like they automatically start that section off like that every time?
Eventually, yeah.
Okay. All right. In reading the charts in the back, obviously I don't want this going through Norco, and we saw the pictures and things like that, but I think this report actually gives us more information to go against the project. And the other thing that's concerning to me, we have very few agricultural areas left in the Empire, and this is looking to take away another big chunk of agricultural farmland, and it's noted as a significant impact in the report, and I have a concern with that, just because farmland in this state is so valuable and it's so limited, and, you know, it's not in our community, it's over in Harupa Valley, but I do think that's another thing that we could probably stand with them on in, in going against the project.
And I, and I agree with Berwin on the, the letter that was written, we were very strong, and again, I would like to look at doing another letter, but I don't know if you've got more cards on this, Cheryl? Okay, well, I'll bring it back here. I know, they, yeah. So, and to reiterate what Robin said, if you look on that report, it goes, the introduction of the riser poles and the Goose Creek Golf Course, which is right, if you're not familiar with it, that's number seven, between number seven and eight.
The Norco High...
The what?
The Norco High School Golf Course.
Okay, well, that is, "An overhead line south of the Santa River would degrade the scenic quality of views from parks and recreation areas within Harupa Valley, as well as throughout the Santa Ana River, the River Corridor." And their duration, it's permanent throughout the life of the transmission line, so they don't care. So I'm, I'm for sending a stronger letter in support of opposition to this thing, and there's no big, there's no benefit to the city, the residents of Norco on Riverside Reliability Line. And the reason I say a new letter is because of, one, the new EIR, but also to remove the Circle City project from the, the February of 2017. But Greg, do you have any more?
Yeah, just your general comments about a stronger letter, because I thought the letter we wrote last time made them cry like little kids, and they took their water line away.
Those guys don't work for them anymore, anyway.
They had published an article in the press enterprise that was very highly critical of the City of Norco.
Good for them.
Oh, yeah, I remember that.
Yes. That's, that's, that's my only comment to that.
Okay, Kevin, any more?
Along with what Robin said, is that the City of Riverside has worked so hard to protect that area in La Sierra, and it just seems a shame that they'll just run those lines through there. That's, that's an area that eventually, if it gets developed, will be very akin to Norco, very large lots, and it's a riding area. And so all of a sudden, you put these gigantic lines up there, what, what's gonna happen? Will they fight to protect that area anymore, and I worry about that.
Okay. Berwin, any more?
No.
Robin, any more? Andy, your thoughts?
Just...
Direction?
Quick direction. Prior to this letter being drafted or written, there's been discussion about meeting with Supervisor Tavelloni. Is that something the mayor and another city council would like to do?
Yeah. Kevin?
Yeah, I'll go meet you.
All right, let's go talk to them.
And I also, in the letter, I'd love to say, we pick option one. Let's pretend it's not boilerplate, let's say, no, option one is the one that won't burn down the river, and, and do that. I mean, what are they gonna do to us? There's no more water to shut off.
We know they're on a blocked road.
We haven't gotten no water, though.
We didn't have it now, we're not gonna get it.
You know what, Mike Gardner's gonna come through with that, because he wants to be supervisor.
Yeah.
In the letter?
To see, no, to see if they wouldn't mind closing Arlington and California North?
If we hurt your feelings a little more?
Yeah, whatever you do, don't close it up.
Right.
They can put one of those transmission line poles right at Arlington and, and right there in the center of the road, so the residents have to drive around it. So you have direction now? A letter?
Yeah.
A strong letter, and...
Supervisor Tavelloni is...
When do you need, when does this have to go to?
I think it's May 17.
Seventeen.
Okay, so let's get this done, get the letter done, anyway, we'll still meet with Tavelloni, and, and maybe we'll tell two of them, they don't listen to the first one, so, okay. You don't need to vote on that, do you? You don't need to vote? We're just good, pretty much?
Formalize it, I'll thank you for that.
Yeah, you, Cheryl, do we, you need a motion to formalize this for our thing? Okay. Can I get a recommendation or a motion to formalize the opposition of the City of Norco regarding the Riverside Transmission Reliability Project, or we can use that as a motion?
And drag them, drag staff to write a letter, a letter for the mayor's signature to that effect.
All right.
Okay, please vote. Thank you.
Come on, Berwin.
That motion passes unanimously.
Hey, we're gonna get out of here before 10. John, anything else?
Nope.
We're going to the city council, city manager, city man, Andy, anything? Robin?
No.
Berwin?
No.
Kevin?
No.
Greg?
One thing. And these were conversation I had with Councilmember Hannah, with the... With the elimination of the right turn lane at Seventh and California, I'd like to have a discussion with staff to see what we could do to post a sign that says, "No right turn onto Seventh Street from, say, 5:00 in the morning till 9:00 in the morning, or 6:00 to 8:00, or something like that," to try to help the residents with the cut through traffic on Seventh Street, and see if that's possible to drive them more towards Sixth.
I'll engage that discussion with this city engineer to find out what we're allowed to do legally regarding traffic flow. I won't guess to say whether we can or can't do it.
All right. He wants to go take it to Dominic to have him look at it. That makes sense. Anything else, Greg? Cheryl? Matt? I still look like one of the three by mice, but thank you for the video. We got more people for on the budget meeting, so you guys did good. Chad, any more? You're gonna bring Rick Wiz contract to us here soon?
Yeah, probably for the meeting on the 16th.
Okay. That's a lovely one, too. Steve? Okay. Brian? Okay, who's cooking, by the way, on the?
JT did.
JT's gonna cook there?
One of our cooks.
Okay, all right, that's on that Saturday. Gina? Good job, by the way. Scott? You guys did good, and I have a flag for their fire truck. For those who didn't know, and I'll let the residents out there, on the parade and horse week, Station 47 had a set of horns on the front of the engine. Now that's Norco, that's personalized, and I like it, and had a little cavalry signal on, symbol on the front. You guys, those guys did good, thank you.
Yeah, everybody. Have water.
You don't get a break, you know that, right? All right.
Sergeant wants one, too, so. We got a cutout going over here.
No, no. I'll, I'll take it. Okay. First of all, thank you for filling in for Eric. How's he doing?
He's coming back Monday.
Okay, good, okay.
Still probably being a little light.
All right. And tell you and Sergeant Davis, thank you for the traffic enforcement on Temescal, and they still want some more on the other end of Temescal, but thank you very much, keep it up. I appreciate that, so. All right, with that, we adjourn.